This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, we are recording. I'm gonna admit some more people. You can go ahead and Nadine, I think you could get started by making a little presentation about what's happened since our last visit.
Sure.
Recording in progress.
This application is for Alice Walsh and just so you know that they do have her on speakerphone here, so she's listening in. So this is a two lot subdivision up off of Shift Road. And plans have been being reviewed by the planning board. One of the last issues of discussion was the extension of the town road to connect Shift Road and Duke Lane. And
Whoops Nadine, Nadine, all of a sudden you got muted. Somehow you got muted Nadine, if you could, there you go.
Okay, okay, alright, so the road extension, the shift town, the town road, Shift Road to Duke Lane. And I believe that we received a resolution from the town board saying that that work is slated to be done this year by the town highway department. I know there were discussions about, you know, some options if the town road didn't get built. But right now, I think you know, the two lots have both department approval, the town board has resolved to make the road extension. Unless there's any, you know, public comment or if anybody has any questions, concerns of where we're at, I think I think that's where we're at, the NAC was done, right?
We're not the continued public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public who wishes to speak about this application, Walsh? Two lot subdivision extension on Duke Lane. Is there anybody here wanting to speak about this extension on Duke Lane? I entertain a vote, a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move Dr. Lawson.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if there isn't any further discussion, I had prepared a resolution for the board's consideration, you may want to to look at that.
The only thing I saw was that the the lot acreages don't agree between the site plan and the survey.
Oh, it may be one of those instances where I took the acreages from the first survey they gave and not the second. So what are the what are the correct dimensions, Mr. Schmalsi?
Um, the, on the most recent survey, it's listing lot two as 1.6 1.607 and the site plan is listing 1.5 plus or minus. And then the lot one on the survey is point seven five seven and on the site plan, it's point seven five.
Well, in the, in the resolution, I used the survey numbers and I didn't do them to three digits, I did them to two digits, so I put point seven six acres for lot one and 1.61 for lot two on the, on the resolution, so I think we're okay.
Alright, are we going to be approving the site plan then also? Or is that not necessary?
It isn't necessary, this is really a subdivision application. The, the site plan shows those I mean, it shows more detail. We could add a condition E that Ms. Carney changes the site plan to match the survey that that, you know, it's always best to do, to have these things match up.
Exactly, I agree.
And I know this was discussed
Oh, you're breaking up a little bit Nadine, I'm afraid.
We're hearing every other symbol.
Nothing's been printed as submitted because we're waiting.
Well, I can't really hear Nadine, but what I'm gonna do in condition E in condition E of the proposed resolution, I'm gonna add to adjust the site plan acreage to match survey acreage. And they can do that with the final plan submission, okay?
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, that seems to be a common issue.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it, you have submissions and they don't get updated when, you know, they don't get resubmitted because nothing much has changed, except minor things, so yeah, just.
That's great, thank you.
Yep.
Would you like to read the resolution?
Sure, I can do that.
Paraphrase, maybe the second phase.
Sure, I won't read all the whereas clauses that recite the history of the application, but I'll start with, be it resolved, the town of Awarson Planning Board hereby grants preliminary plat and conditional final approval as described above for subdivision of the lands of Alice Walsh, subject to the conditions, limitations, and restrictions set forth below. One, no changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made to any plat after approval and endorsement by the planning board. Two, all fees, including consultant fees, shall be paid. Three, the final plat public hearing is waived per the town of Awarson zoning code. Condition four, the planning board chairman is authorized to sign the final plan once all of the conditions below are met. A, the preliminary plan dated November 30th, 2021 should be retitled and resubmitted as a final plat stamped by the severe with a title block ready for signature. B, the final plan shall depict the approved construction of the extension of Duke Lane as approved and specified in resolution number seven of the town board dated 11 January 2022. C, a note shall be placed on the final plan indicating that certificates of occupancy shall not be issued for completed residences on either lot one or lot two until the street extension of Duke Lane is constructed to the specification set forth in resolution number seven of the town board dated 11 January 2022 to the satisfaction of the highway superintendent. D, in the event that the street extension of Duke Lane is not constructed by the town of Awarson and a connection from Shift Road to Duke Lane is not created, certificates of occupancy shall not be issued for completed residences on either lot one or lot two until the owners provide an extension of Shift Road up to the western boundary of lot one with a turnaround suitable for emergency vehicles and plow trucks to the satisfaction of the highway superintendent. E, and this is a new one, the site plan shall be adjusted, the site plan acreages shall be adjusted to match the survey acreages. And six, the final plan shall be filed with the Ulster County Clerk within 62 days of the plat being signed by the chairman of the planning board.
I'll move this resolution, Don.
Motion by Don Schmals.
I'll second it, Dr. Lawson.
Hi, I'm back, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I could barely hear you, I heard the resolution, thank you. Um, because I probably lose you again, Jonathan, do you think you can email me a copy of that resolution and we'll make sure, I'll touch base with you to make sure we amend the plans as needed?
Yes, and what I'll do is I've got my notes here, in the morning, when the sun comes up, I will put in the changes, the small change we made about the site plan and survey acreages and I'll send it to Robin and, and a copy to you.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. Good night.
Good night.
Under motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you Nadine, you have a completed site plan. Quality self-storage. Is there anybody here for quality self-storage?
Yep, I'm here.
Don, Ms. Finero.
Are we, are we up now?
Yes.
Alright, let me see if I can share my screen, can I share my screen?
Yes, let me find you, Mr. Eric, hold on.
Alright.
Finero. Hold on, I just let me, I'm multitasking here, I'll be right with you to share the screen. Meanwhile, you could start talking and describing the project.
Okay, yep, so we're proposing a self-storage facility development as well as a lot line adjustment is what the project consists of.
Is this a right application, are we doing Finero?
Finero is not on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they were above us in the agenda, so I was, I thought we were.
Okay, not a problem, I just wanted to make sure I had the right application in front of me.
Alright, so the site is located along Route 209, it's between Tom Pinker's existing self-storage facility and the Dunkin' Donuts. The parcel contains a garage out front that's very close to 209 and then there's a single-family home behind it. And then the self-storage facility would go in that one area that's right next to the single-family home. We're proposing to utilize the existing curb cut along 209 for the existing self-storage facility and then to access into this new site. There will also be a separate gate with a code entry and a knock box similar to the existing facility for this side of the facility. We're proposing three separate buildings that will total 7,950 square feet.
And Eric, by the way, you should be able to share now if you want to show any, show any scenes from your drawings.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be good to have this up and then I can talk about it. Can you see the site plans?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in a little, okay, so the first building here is 15 feet by 110 feet and it will have access on the southern side of the building only. The second building is 30 feet by 110 feet and it'll have access on both sides of it. And then the third building is 30 feet by 100 feet and will have access on both sides as well. The drive aisles that we're proposing are proposed to initially be gravel initially and then eventually be paved in the future. We're also going to propose them to be a 25-foot wide minimum to see vehicle access throughout the site. Alright, the facility will be fully enclosed with the fence similar to the existing facility, so it'll be chain-linked around the rear and then closer to 209 will be the more decorative black fence. We're also leaving some area up here to the west for a snow storage area.
Eric, I have a question for you. Dr. Lawson, the height of these buildings, are they gonna be similar to the height of the north storage units by the bowling alley? Okay, thank you.
Yep, yeah, so basically this is going to be an extension of that development, so the same manufacturer of the buildings, colors, heights, material, everything like that would be exactly the same. The, the lighting, the fencing, the landscaping, so it'll all be an extension of that and we would utilize the same manufacturers, operators, items, things like that as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Eric?
Yep.
Did you receive my memorandum dated January 11th last week?
Yes, yep, I received that.
And do you have any questions about the six items that I listed to complete the application?
No, no questions, um, you know, we can provide the additional information and we actually did supply some of the additional information, we made a supplementary submission on January 4th, so we provided like an update to the stormwater management design, so we provided the stormwater report and did a more full design of that, so we did submit some of those items.
Yeah, that's right, I did, I did see that come in, it's probably right after, or sometime right around the time I was writing it, okay.
But, but yeah, no, no issues with what you wrote. So, do you want me to keep going on the site?
I guess, do any of the board members have any other, other questions?
Yes, I do have a question. I was looking at the stormwater and it looks as if you're collecting all the stormwater from half the site and putting it to a single 15-inch discharge on the top of a very steep hill where previously a lot of that property was sheet flow that went down through off from it and across and down that steep bank in a different, along the back property line. My concern is that you're going, when you have a 10 or 100-year storm, you're gonna be washing out that bank down there over top of what's gonna be Cresco and causing a large amount of erosion down over that steep bank. And I was just wondering how you would propose to mitigate that concern.
Yep, so right now we do have the outlet control structure to help to reduce the peak flows from, you know, post-development back to the pre-development levels, but we do plan on installing riprap there and we also have the outlet closer to that, the corner of our site where it's flatter. It's still, there's still a little area above the steep slope, if you could see my screen down here.
I, I see that, but, but where you're discharging that flat slope is, is really only a few feet from your property line. And, you know, at the 10-year, you're gonna be flowing a full six-inch pipe coming out through there where previously, most of that flow had been going sheet flow down over the bank. So you're changing the location of discharge. I don't disagree that you've, you've, by having a basin there, you've mitigated the peak flow, but the problem I have is how that flow is concentrated to one point as opposed to being across the entire top of that steep bank that is just off your property. You understand what I'm saying Eric?
Yes, yep, definitely understood, and what we can do is take a look at trying to spread it out further. I think that would go a long way and see if there's any way we can maybe do a little bit more with, with riprap, I'm thinking. Um, and kind of spreading out that flow like you're talking about.
Also.
The only way I can see you doing that is with a spreader bar or something like that, that, you know, dissipates over the entire back property line, which you know, is difficult to maintain and all that sort of thing, but you know, it's a real concern of mine that, you know, we dump large, relatively large amounts of, of water at a, the end of a culvert.
Mr. Schmalsi?
Yes.
I would, you may have noticed that my rec, my plan comment three was that the stormwater report should be sent to town-designated engineer, Mr. Larios for a report. So perhaps when it comes time, when we wrap this up and figure out where, next steps, you may want to make a motion to do that.
Well, yeah, I just, I just wanted to, you know, as long as Eric's here and we're.
Oh, absolutely.
The sketch plan, I wanna, I wanna bring as much as I can for him before he goes any further with his design and, and that sort of thing.
Understood, that's, that's good.
Yep, no, that, that makes sense, Don, and that's something we could definitely look into and address.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
I have one other thing I'd like to bring up and it relates to the lot line adjustment. So I just wanted to clarify, so our proposal does not include any, creating any new lots or subdividing any lots, we are proposing to move the existing lot line to the west so that the self-storage facility would be combined with the existing self-storage facility and then the garage along 209 and the single-family home would be separated out onto its own lot. But what that's going to do is create variances, the need for variances on that lot that the garage and the house would remain on. So we're, we would be looking at relief from minimum lot size area, the side yard setback as well as the rear yard setback for those. So we will be required to go to the ZBA on that, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And that, and that would probably have to be done before we go further with this, correct John?
Well, we could go further with the site plan, but not, but withhold the approval till he gets variances, this, this all relates to my comment number two.
Right, right.
He need, you need to do a subdivision plan.
Correct.
And the subdivision plan would have to be approved along with the site plan and the subdivision plan simply can't be approved if it, if there's a zoning problem that requires a variance, so I guess if you work on your, and, and if you work on your plan, you gotta show all of the land, everything to the right, everything to the left, all in one sheet with the mergers, the lot line shifting, the, you know, with acreages for each and, and then a bulk table that shows on, for each of the lots in the subdivision, new subdivision, what is the required standard for distances, areas, and what's provided. So, once you do that, then, then we'll know exactly what you need a variance for and then you can go to the ZBA and, and, and get that.
Okay, yes, and that's understood, you know, we took it far enough to show, we kind of wanted to just show and get maybe some initial feedback from the board.
Right.
In, in our updated submission, we did include the site data chart which had, we are breaking out those two parcels in that, but yes, and understand that we would have to do a subdivision plat that takes it further, shows both lots, you know, that the whole, total area that we are revising the lot area.
Um, Jonathan, and I'm not, I'm not completely familiar with the new code, but is there also a deduction of acreage for steep slopes?
Uh, there is, the, the net uh, I, it needs to be, it does need to be done. I said steep slope, in the memo, I said steep slope areas should be netted out per the zoning code. Uh, you know, so, so I did note that, however, as a practical matter, the steep slopes are really only at the very bottom of the drawings, at the edges of things. I don't think it's gonna change the results that much.
I don't, I don't think so either, but just, again, the sketch plan, let's get it all taken care of here early.
Yep. So I guess the question for the board is, do you want to have him come back with more information prior to setting a public hearing, or do you want to ask for information by a date certain? And then and, and tentatively set a public hearing date if, if more materials arrive, or how would you like to proceed with this case?
I would, I would personally think that we should, if they want to go with this site plan and subdivision, that it needs to be sent to the zoning board before we take any further action because if they can't get the, the variance, this whole site plan is out the window.
I don't think that we're ready for a public hearing.
I don't either.
There's
Too many questions.
This is, this is a a good detailed submittal, but we, we do need much more detail. And I think it's better to get all of that in front of us before we schedule a public hearing, so my recommendation is to wait, but of course, as, as I always say, I don't have a vote.
And would we come back to the board with that additional information? Or like Don was saying, would we go to the ZBA first? Then come back to the planning board?
Eric, I think it's really the applicant's choice unless the planning board feels otherwise, but you, you do take a risk in in coming here first, you know, you can put a lot into it and then have the ZBA saying, no, we're not gonna grant that variance. So I would, I would recommend you go to the ZBA first, but that's really a matter of what kind of risk Mr. Pinker is, is willing to take.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I, I would like to go to the ZBA next and try to go for the variances at that point, as long as there's no major changes to this, the site layout, other than what we talked about. I know that we'll have to do some work on the stormwater that, in the rear, that may change the site around a little bit. But as far as the layout of, say, the fencing, the, the buildings, if there's any major concerns, that would also have changed the lot line a little bit. So, that, that's the other risk too, is if, you know, we come, we go to the ZBA, we get the variances and then come back to the planning board and then we have to revise the lot line again, it may change some of the variances. But as long as, you know, the general layout is is okay, you know, we can provide some additional details and make some additional revisions based on what we talked about, I think the biggest one is stormwater-related. So that, that'll be the biggest change that we'll have to work out before we go to the ZBA with a final application.
Yeah, I don't have any, any other issues with the, with the site plan other than what's in Jonathan's memo. So, yeah, I, I would be, I would say, I would, don't think there's any major changes to the site plan, but I can see.
I'm gonna agree with that.
I agree. All in favor, waiting for
Sorry, what was that John?
All in favor of waiting until we get an additional map?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a motion then?
Yeah.
Yeah, do we need to be like a referral to the ZBA, official referral?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that you should have a motion to refer this to the ZBA.
We'll make that motion.
To, for the two variances.
I, I think it'll be three, I think it'll be three variances.
Three, okay.
Yep.
And I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion by Dr. All right, we have a motion by Dr. Mountain?
No, no. Motion by Don.
Seconded by me.
I'm saying, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Post. We will see you again when you get your
All right, sounds like a plan. I thank you for your time and input.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Carmen Cibor Labor Latino Restaurant. Timely sign. Anybody here for timely signs?
Everyone, I'm here uh on behalf of Carmen Cibor Latino.
Oh, great.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I can hear you guys, yep.
And your name, please?
My name is Tyson McCasland.
You'd like to give a brief description of what you're planning on doing?
Uh, yeah, we're looking to put a double-sided freestanding sign as shown in the drawings. Uh, it'll be internally lit. Um, and we're looking to put it on to two stone pillars.
So what is the total square footage of the sign with the posts and the blocks?
Uh, well, the sign is face itself is three foot by eight foot, so that'd be 24 square feet.
Right? All right. Hey, Robin, our zoning code is um, is it just the sign or is the, is it the complete sign square footage? Including the uh stone basis? You're muted, Robin.
Yeah, I uh, um, Robin is looking it up. I can see her doing, I can see her looking it up right now. Uh, I recall just reading that the, the sign area is the, you know, the part that contains the letters and not, not the supports.
Okay.
But that's the building inspector's call.
Yeah, cuz I, I was reading on page uh one, on page twenty-five, they had like the sign surface area included the um columns, column areas.
Okay, well, is that in the uh, are you reading off of the, the?
That was the, that was the code that you sent us.
The new code?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I uh, I did not.
I was just wondering, the reason I'm asking is that, you know, where it's going to be placed by the road and by two oh nine is that rock area, which the sign looks nice, don't get me wrong. The um, but is it going to block the view looking northbound with two oh nine traffic?
Um, I can say that it's, I'm sorry, can I speak to that?
Yeah. Yeah, I had, I had something very similar too is, is uh, you know, as far as is there going to be landscaping underneath it? Is it going to be, you know, or is it going to be in the site triangle off from uh Clinton Street, that sort of thing, uh, you know? A banner tied there later? You know, a banner that goes in between, you know, one of those floating banners and stuff, who knows? You know, I just um, my question.
Sorry, I, I don't understand the banner. What was the question about a banner?
Oh, you know, you can buy like a um, a canvas style, you know, like the ones that you, 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 you know, it, it has like four ties. You can tie it in between the banner, have more surface area once it's approved. You know, like they do at um, you know, uh, car dealerships.
Oh, no, there's, there's no, there's no plan to anything further than what was shown in the drawings.
No, I understand that. That's now.
Oh.
Yeah, but you, you can do that. You can set that as a condition of approval.
All right, okay. Yeah, my, my concern is uh where it is um with, in the base of it, and the, and the height would be what, total ten feet high?
Seven. The, the current height is shown as seven foot, and I'd like to make an amendment to that because as far as I understand from.
Okay.
Yeah, the, in my, in my memorandum, I noted that the height was proposed as seven feet, and that would require him to be set back fourteen feet from the right-of-way line, not the edge of the highway, but fourteen feet from the right-of-way, which would be quite a distance and would presumably not interfere with any sightlines. Uh, however, if he does lower the, if he, if he lowers the sign, let's say five feet high, then he'd need to be ten feet from the right-of-way line.
Uh, and that's actually exactly what we wanted to do.
And the right-of-way line is in the grass, you know, in front of the restaurant. The right-of-way line is, is pretty distant from the edge of the road. So uh, I think that, that by the time they set it back to conform with that code, um, it would, it would be um uh, out of the, out of any interfering sightlines. The other issue is if you're going to include the uh area of the, of the post, if the post is seven feet uh tall and two feet wide, that would be an extra fourteen feet of of post area to the sign. You only have thirty-two to play with. You have thirty-two square feet. Um, uh, and thirty-two square feet, you you've got twenty-four now. That only leaves you eight feet to play with for the supports. So you may not be able to do such large supports. Uh, did Rob, did Robin find, did Robin find that code section about including the area of the supports for the sign? I see Robin is still muted.
All right, just on, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, it's um appendix B, B one, wall signs. Where we talk about freestanding. Now, we also have to take in consideration that we do need a permit from um DOT. And they may require that sign to be posted even further behind than, than um fifteen feet.
Yeah, that was a valid question.
Can I speak to that, Robin?
Because, because right now we don't have DOT approval yet for the sign.
May I, may I speak to that, Robin?
Yes, did we speak this afternoon?
We did speak this afternoon, and, and I actually, I actually spoke with uh two DOT people after our conversation. And um, they, they reiterated to me that if the sign is not on the DOT right-of-way, that they have no worries about, they are not worried sign at all. They do not have any interest in any type of information about a sign. Um, if it was in there right-of-way by that, then it was a totally different story, but they were actually a bit confused as to why I was even calling them, because they said that uh it has nothing to do with them at all, if it's out of their right-of-way.
Really? Okay, well, I'm glad.
How many, I'm sorry, how many feet you away from two oh nine?
Uh, where the sign is being located?
Yeah.
Uh, the sign is going to be located, well, the, the plans currently show it to be uh would be fourteen feet from uh, excuse me, from the right-of-way. We're looking to amend that to bring the height of the sign down uh to five feet, so we only have to be ten feet from the right-of-way.
Um, if, if you can get the paper saying from DOT, because that's what I require to have for Allenville for my side. Uh, I believe over there it's supposed to be uh more feet. Because alone, um, it's almost like three hundred feet right of way. So uh, I'm not sure you have to. Yeah.
I'm gonna need some kind of a letter from the DOT stating to me that their approval, that, that based on the fact that the sign that they're proposing is without the, with out of the right-of-way that, that they're not going to require them permit. I'm going to need to have that in writing. So the gentleman that you did speak to is going to have to put that in writing to me.
Yeah, and I don't understand, why would you want to put a, a, a sign that someone owns in the right-of-way of, oh, never mind, I just, I just.
Well, we're not, and that's the whole situation.
I understand that, yeah.
Right, so I, I mean, um, Robin.
Right-of-way, you could still own the property, so.
Right.
If you, if you can call me tomorrow and you can give me the gentleman's name and telephone number, I'll be more than happy to give him a call myself.
Yes, I actually have two people. One is a woman uh who's actually in the sign permit division, and I will give you her information as well as uh the guy that I spoke with. Both of them have, uh, had the same exact answer for me.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, no problem. So uh, just to confirm here, I am amending, uh, I'd like to amend the, the sign permit here to change the height to five foot above grade to allow only ten foot of distance from the uh state uh right-of-way on Route two oh nine, and I'm happy to send you an updated proof and rendering to accommodate that.
We also get like a uh, a view of the, of a car at the stop sign looking southbound on two oh nine. I, I just don't, I just, you know, now you lowered it even more, so now you have a s, much of a space in between. If you're five feet high and your car sits about five feet high, you're looking directly into the sign.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to, to render it right on the, the picture, so you can see how, how far we really are.
Yeah, I just don't want any accidents occur in that corner.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a point to bring up on the illumination. Uh, sometimes there's a sign just down the road that I think gets kind of bright. And uh, I don't know how you would prevent that, or you have an illumination factor. Because theoretically, if you're driving down the road, no light should be shining.
Right, like the hospital sign, which I think Timely did also, you know, it's LED and it dims at night, so it's not like so bright. Is it, is it going to be like fluorescent lighting, LED inside?
It will be internally LED illuminated, which is actually completely different from the LED board that you're referring to.
I understand that.
Yep, no, I just want to, I want to explain so everybody understands. So the LED sign for uh Elmore Regional Hospital, those are what's referred to as exposed neon, so I'm, excuse me, exposed LED modules, so you physically see every single LED. Uh, on the sign that I'm proposing, the LEDs are inside and covered by the translucent sign. Um, it would look exactly like the upper sign of the Elmore Regional Hospital sign, uh, which has their logo on it, which has no uh visible lights. Uh, no, excuse me, no um direct lights. It's, it's all masked by the uh, the graphics on the sign.
Uh, I do have a question. I mean, with the seven-foot-high sign, you were showing it uh four foot above grade, the bottom of the sign. Were you going to, when you lowered the sign, are you going to decrease the actual size of the sign? Uh, proportionally, or are you going to remain that the same at uh three foot tall?
Uh, the goal is to leave the sign size the same, the square footage is the same, and uh simply just lower the height of the post, which I know we have to speak about here, um, in reference to the square footage.
Okay, so, so we're, we'd only be looking at uh uh two feet above grade underneath the sign.
The bottom of the sign, that is correct. And what I will do is once we, yep, and once we redo the math, um, I was not aware that the um, that the actual posts are included in the square footage, so I apologize for not knowing that. Um, I will certainly update this. We will make the, the posts smaller to accommodate. Could you just clarify again? Did you say the maximum square footage was thirty-two or thirty-four square feet?
Thirty-two. I mean, the appendix B uh on the uh, the, the uh, an individual freestanding sign is limited to thirty-two. In the mixed-use district. The mixed-use zoning district, the maximum size for an individual freestanding sign is thirty-two square feet.
Cannot.
Excellent. And Robin, could you please tell me again which area that is in the sign code, so I can review that when I get back to the shop tomorrow?
B four.
B four, okay, thank you.
So that's um, I wonder appendix B, and it's B four, and it goes into B five.
Okay, appendix four, okay, thank, uh, for beef, yep, okay, and um, and just to confirm, uh, is it okay if we submit, resubmit drawings that include everything you just, that we just mentioned? Um, to avoid having to go back for um an update to this meeting?
That's their, I can't make that decision. That's their decision to me.
Understood. JP, is that possible, or anybody else who is allowed to make that decision?
Uh, I guess it's, uh, I, I think the chairman should ask the board whether the board would want to see an, another uh application at a session before the planning board, or whether you want to try to craft a resolution that sets these as conditions, but there's a lot of open-ended here, I think, a lot of questions asked.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I have, I have one more question, maybe more, I don't know. If and when the sign that gets approved, um, I notice the drafting company did the uh site plan, is the is it just for the sign? Or is it for the presented uh drawing that they gave us? Because I don't remember if that actually jives with the original site. So that's.
I'm referring only to the signage. I cannot speak to anything on the property.
Right, no, I'm, I'm asking our attorney and our building.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, Paul, I don't remember um a sign being on the original site plan, no.
No, I understand that, but let, you know, they presented us a uh drawing of the whole site. And I don't know if that's exact of what it was when we approved the site. So if we do give approval of the
I will have.
Is it just sign that we're giving approval for?
That's the only thing they apply for.
And you can specify that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Uh, approval for the sign only.
Okay.
They, they do owe us.
Right, the application only is for a sign.
Hmm, good, okay, thank you.
The applicant does owe us an as-built uh map. Make their still in arrears with that.
Um, I was under the impression that we uh supplied that as part of this application, because is there a way that somebody could confirm that?
John, John. What did you say? What did you say? I'm sorry, I was having another conversation. What, what did you just say?
I said that there is, they're supposed to prove, present the board with an as-built uh map totally finished, which includes buried electrical cables to the circles and refrigerators and a few other things that have been.
But we have some fire pits there, and we have, we have a freezer there, and um.
Why are we, why are we tonight at this meeting for a?
Well, I'm just saying that they owe that, and if he's providing an as-built, it has to be included in that.
Okay, that's not signed or certified, the drawing. At least the one I got.
Mary Lou.
You know, the as-bills go to the building department, so I have not reviewed those, so I don't know exactly what's required, but perhaps the building department can look to make sure that they, they have that. If not, let's get that in before the next meeting.
I don't even know where they're talking about this guy. This poor guy just wants to put up a sign, and they're breaking balls for.
I have no idea.
I just feel that, you know, we, we ask for things, um, we set precedent for things. We move forward with applications. I think what's, what we, we do for everyone else should also be done for everyone. That's, that's all. I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify some stuff that uh we have.
Yeah, if they haven't fulfilled the requirements of their last approval, they should do that. It, it looks like from the things that you've submitted um, that perhaps they actually have that ready, but that should be done independently of this to the, to the building department, so they can make sure it's all proper, they can close out that part of the file. And then we can sit on this.
Right. By the way, I, I can't see who was talking, but who made that comment, please?
Uh, it was, I, I muted him. I, I didn't, there's, there's forty-seven people in the meeting. I'm doing my best to, to, it's like whack-a-mole.
I, I, yeah, I understand. I don't, I don't feel like I was busting anybody's stuff, but I was just trying to make everything the same for all the applicants. What's good for one applicant should be good for everyone else. That's all. Uh, yeah, I'd, I'd like to comment, I think the sign is very attractive. I think it will be a uh a uh addition to the site, and uh, so I think it's a uh it's a beautiful-looking sign, so I would say if we can, you can go ahead and take care of those other issues. I don't see any issues moving forward as far as on my point, my part. Yeah, and I previously said that I like the sign too. It's very nice.
Yeah, I agree.
A year and a half ago, a year and a half ago.
You're muted, Robin.
Okay, uh.
Um, I think uh there's somebody wants to speak. Uh, Eric would like to speak on his behalf there. Eric, you're, you're muted.
Uh, Eric.
Yeah, the owner of the property there uh looked like they put his. Yeah, the owner of the property there, uh, looked like they put his, he put his hand up there. Unmuted.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, how are you? Uh, my name's Eric Abraham and, um, we have an ass built. We had that done by the, uh, engineer. We had that all together stamped, the stamp plans. And we've had that for probably the last, uh, two months now. We've had it. So that has everything with the refrigeration, that has, uh, the, uh, fire pits that were added. It's a complete ass built of everything that was asked by the chairman. When I spoke with him last, which was late summer.
Okay, has that been submitted, sir? To the building department?
It has not been submitted yet, no.
Okay, that's what we need. It's great that it's done, but we needed to get to the building department.
It is complete.
Great, thank you.
That's great. Please, please submit that to Robin.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll bring that down, absolutely.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Um, so just to confirm here, it sounds like Eric has the site plan under control, or excuse me, the as-built under control. Um, can you guys just clarify or confirm for me, um, if I'll be able to simply update the proofs just to, to ma- uh, to meet the criteria? And list the exact distances from each of the planes and submit the photo, um, if we can avoid having to go to another meeting on this?
I don't, I don't know that I'd be, uh, willing to go ahead and give an approval without, you know, uh, some of that. Uh, seeing actually where those, that sign's got to be placed in regards to the side road and site distances and those sorts of things. Um, because I mean, that's really we're, we're, we're looking at a safety issue here, so, uh, I would not be in favor of, uh, granting a conditional approval on what we've got so far.
Would you like to make that a motion?
Or I, go ahead, Mary Lou.
You don't have to make it a motion, um, you only need to be, have a motion if you're going to approve it tonight. Otherwise you can just say you're going to put it on the next meeting if, if no one moves to approve it. And you don't get a second and you don't get a vote to approve it, any of those things.
Yeah, I agree with Don.
Yep.
What I said before also, I agree.
Okay, so, uh, we will, you're on for the next meeting. Uh, I know it does sound like a simple sign.
So does.
It, it just, uh, uh, things go. And you've actually changed the height of the sign in mid-meeting here, so I, I knew that that would be great. And is there anything else you have to bring before the board?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
Illumina Services Foundation. Who's here for that?
I thought I saw Mr. Kent up earlier.
I see him. He's muted. Unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm here, uh, as the architect, Jess Walker, and Thomas is the civil engineer. He should be with, with us, hold on.
He's here.
There he is.
Good evening. So would you like to give a deep brief description of what you wish to do and where it will be?
Well, it's, uh, it's been a while. It's nice to see you all again. Um, what we've done is we've moved the site to another location. I believe you've, uh, seen that, uh, uh, the new location. And, um, uh, essentially we've responded to the planner's, um, comments. And we'd like to move into a public hearing.
I don't know that I've ever seen the, uh, the nine twenty uh, drawings. And I tried and, and I know, uh, uh, Jonathan sent them to me electronically, but unfortunately I wasn't able to prop them out to review them.
Uh, the, the set was, uh, actually sent on, um, uh, the October fifth submittal. And those drawings had never changed, uh, with the exception of, uh, an eight-word note that the, uh, that Jonathan had requested, uh, regarding, uh, the temperature, uh, of the lighting. Uh, and everything else was done, um, uh, through notes. Uh, we received the preliminary approval from the health department. Uh, we received an approval, uh, to proceed, uh, from, uh, Dennis Larios on drainage. Um, and, uh, the other items, uh, were all done by notes.
Um, all's, all's I can tell you is what I have in my packet, which is the, the last date revision date I had was three one. Oh, okay, so it is, all right, never mind. No, I have one, three, three one, twenty twenty-one is the set of plans I have in my packet. So I don't know whether, what happened, but they didn't get my, in my packet for me to be able to look at.
They were, they were, there was a, a, a set in the fall that was distributed.
Isn't there one August thirty-first, twenty-one?
I, I'm just telling you what was in my packet. I don't know what, you know.
Apparently, uh, the, the last, uh, the, the, apparently he didn't receive, uh, Don didn't receive them.
Right.
Okay.
And, uh, I did attempt this afternoon to send them electronically.
Right, yeah, and I, I just couldn't print them, get them printed out, so.
In any event, in the recommendation in my memorandum is that they, the, this is now substantially complete and you could schedule a public hearing.
I think you need, uh, something from Tony or the building's highway superintendent. And the fire department, did they visit the site?
Tony is here, but, um, he has been to the site, yes.
And so maybe some sort of recommendations from him. Uh, also.
The fire company has not, um, written a new letter since the last letter that we had received.
I think the concern is the angle of the road or the drop off or the, how the road is going to go in.
The, the concern was from the, uh, original submittal, uh, because the, the new profile is, uh, a, a fraction of the slope of the original and it's also a fraction of the slope of the town road that brings you to it. So it's, um, it's a very diff-
So I think the confusion is, is I'm looking at my notes here and I don't have that same map that, Don is talking about. So in an effort to be clear, to clarify it, if you could just resubmit the map to us electronically and, uh, a hard copy to.
Well, I submitted, uh, thirteen sets of documents, uh, hand-delivered, uh, last month. Uh, well, a few weeks ago, anyway.
Um, I think, yeah, I think we got these in October. Is it possible that these were in your folder for the October meeting? And I don't know, did either of you miss the October meeting? So maybe they're still at the.
Off the agenda. We took them off the agenda after the three of us went. I, myself and Tony went up there and we had a lot of questions in relationship to their site plan.
Okay.
To that meeting.
I'm sorry, repeat what you said to them?
The, we submitted those drawings, uh, uh, prior to your, uh, uh, going up to the site. It was taken off the agenda prior to your going up to the site.
Yes.
Because it was submitted in Octo- it was submitted, uh, for the October fifth, uh, it was submitted on October fifth.
You, you submitted a plan on October fifth and then after we went up there, you submitted another plan October the nineteenth.
Okay.
So you, you submitted a plan fourteen days after we went up there, based on us going up there. Which I have in my hand here, which your last revision on this map was nine twenty twenty-one.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the last map.
Yes, nine twenty.
Some members are saying they don't have that. So let's make sure it gets distributed to everyone. I have it, um.
I've got that too. That's, and when I wrote him at review memorandum.
You on it. You gave us the review memorandum on it.
Yeah, on the review memorandum that I wrote on October eleventh, I reviewed the drawings that were revised on September the twentieth. So, and I never, I don't write review memos until I get the drawings in the mail, so I got them.
Alright, so we haven't made another review since.
No.
No.
That they have not returned to the board and what's missing is the comment letters from, uh, uh, my, my, my comments, uh, starting on page two is review letters from building, fire and highway are missing of those plans, uh.
Jonathan, Tony's here.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
I went up there and looked at property, the three of you guys, how come you didn't include us?
Uh, I was in town, I was in town that day and I had met John and I wanted to see the property and I certainly didn't mean to snub you in any way. But then, the next day I said, you guys should go up there and I, uh, uh, and there's, there's no requirement that we go together.
Alright, question for you. You should have told us when you were going to be there.
Okay.
Alls we seen is some kind of a peg with something on a tree. That's all we seen.
Uh, uh, I'm not, I'm not understanding what, what the issue, what the issue is. You saying that that there's some sort of a problem because I, I inspected the site and I, and you weren't with me?
You guys should have, uh, took us up there too. That's, that's at least common, you know, lose decency. The other thing is, the way you put that peg is how's this road going to go up there? You going straight up the hill? You going zigzag? That's more than ten percent grade.
It sounds, it sounds like Mr. Kent up. I've been saying all along that you need to meet with the highway department. And it sounds like not only haven't you met with them, but they really would like to meet with you and go on site. And I think you should make that arrangement and get them to review the plans. Work with Mr. Paze, show them your plans, show them the site. And we can, uh, uh, move on this. Uh, you're still missing, you're still missing the review letters from the building and fire and highway departments. That's number one comment on my memo.
Well, I think we have some kind of, something she's looking at all to get is look at at the same time.
Certainly make that arrangement.
And I, and I would be happy to do it.
Calls and, and emails and, and letters. Um, I, I know everyone is busy. We haven't received any comment back, uh, from any of the departments.
No, you did, you received. I know that we did receive.
I re- I spoke with Robin in the office one day.
I know we got a letter back from the fire, we got a, we got a letter back from the fire district saying that they weren't happy. But that was, you know, before the revision of the map of on the October nineteenth meeting, but nothing has been submitted to the NAP and our fire department to review since that, so. Are they happy with your new plan? I, they have not seen it, so they're, they can't make a comment based on your new plan. You haven't submitted it.
I submitted, I submitted these plans, the updated plan to the building department, the highway department and the fire department. And I, uh, provided the building, the, uh, the, uh, planning, uh, secretary Barbara Paeus with the, um, with the information. It's in the transmittal.
Okay, so.
But at any rate, if they don't have it, then we'll have to, uh, uh, make another effort.
Yes, that would be helpful, thank you. Cause I, I don't have anything from since then, from the first, uh, response that they had given us.
And I would encourage you if, if, uh, uh, if any of you, uh, you know, want to, uh, meet me on a site. Give me a call. This is the first I've heard in, uh, six months that, uh, that there is a problem that I came that day without the others, but just give me a call.
Well, I do, I do agree that, um, we should all go there together. So before the weather gets worse, let's, uh, try to schedule something, please.
And if those maps are still in the office and haven't been distributed to the planning board members, could, you know, could someone mail those out to them like they were mailed out to Jonathan and myself? So everybody can see them before the next meeting.
Is there?
That's fine too. That's fine too, Barbara. Or if everyone could arrange to stop by and pick them up from Barbara, that would be lovely.
What's, yeah, what strikes me as funny is, is that, uh, Don gets his, uh, um, package of, of applications every month directly from the, from the office. Uh, so if he says he doesn't have it somehow or other, just got missed. And I apologize for the board not having it. Uh, it's an oversight, corona overload, everything. And, uh, this is totally a new way of doing business, this is a new start. So I, I sincerely apologize. You may have double work here. In the meantime, if Barbara has those submittals, um, we will see that every board member gets them somehow. I suggest just dropping into town hall and picking them up, wear a mask and leaving.
And I see, um, Thomas, I see that you did send a letter to, uh, the NAP and our fire district to Ralph Davis on October fifteenth.
Was, that was after the revised set.
Right, yeah. So yeah, she did in fact write a letter to them, but we never got a response back from your, in regards to this letter. Okay? And you sent one to Tony and you sent one to me, so three different letters. Yeah. And we went up there. Alright, so why don't you, um, let's try to schedule something, uh, so you can give us all a call tomorrow, send us a, an email and we'll all try to schedule a date and a time.
That'd be great.
I'm gonna opt out because I was on the slate. Uh, and allow any other board members to wish to replace me, uh, attend the walk-through.
Okay, well, maybe, um, Don and Frank and, and, um, Jonathan and Tony and I, we can all go.
That's Doug, maybe Doug might want to.
Yeah, Doug, yep.
Just avoid a forum.
We can't have no more than, than three, right, Mary Lou, three? Okay.
Yeah, I'm still working, so I wouldn't be available anyway, so.
Okay, so, um, Doug Hart, are you available?
Just let me know.
Okay. Alright, as soon as we hear from.
Who would like to attend? Perhaps we'll do that. Doug, you, you would like to attend?
Yes, I would.
Robin?
Yes, well Frankie.
Tony, would you like to, uh, uh, go up again?
Frank, Frank can come with me as being part of the building department and not as a planning board member.
That's fine, but because he is a planning board member, I still don't want any more than two other planning board members there. Let's.
I understand, Mary Lou. Thank you. Alright, so Don. Don, Don Schmose.
No, I won't be making it.
No, Don, not, I'm sorry. Doug Hart, Doug Hart, Doug Hart, I'm sorry.
I'll be there. Let me know.
And you can have one more if either Don Odom or or Eric would like to attend, if they can like thumb wrestle if they both want to attend. I don't know.
Tony, Tony, you want to attend?
Me, yes.
He's not planning.
What about the um, uh Mr. Davis from the fire department?
Yes, we'll also advise him as well. And um Jonathan, um, Ask, Don Constable?
Yes.
Escrow account?
That's, oh, yes, yes, good.
I forwarded that email information to the client. Uh, he is out of town right now. Uh, otherwise he would have stopped by uh uh and hand delivered a check. He said that he will um take care of that uh immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we will see you next month. And in the meantime, there will be a visitation to the site. And the board members will try to get in that. Okay? Alrighty, thank you for.
We'd like to, we'd like to uh schedule a public hearing. That's the most important thing. It's been many months and we've uh provided all of the information that's been requested.
I kind of understand that the many months are not the obligation of the board. You just never submitted or it never came in or asked to be.
So, Mr. Chairman, did the, did Jonathan's or um comments been answered with this last submission?
No.
No. So then we
So I was under the impression all of the 20 odd questions were answered.
Why don't we let Jonathan speak to it?
We have, you have a memorandum dated January 11th that I delivered last week. Comment one is we don't have review letters from building, fire and highway. Uh, then um and that was my comment. The other comments had been addressed. You addressed the lighting that I questioned, the bulk standards, stormwater management, uh, septic system were all addressed. So you, that the open comment that has taken all this time is the open comment. However, I did in my memo, think that we could go ahead and schedule a public hearing uh with the understanding that you could get those review letters. Uh, you've, we need the comments from fire, building and uh highway. Uh, but it's up to the board whether they feel that without those letters, they can go ahead and set a date for hearing or whether they want to wait for those letters to come in.
Both Jonathan and I, having reviewed the the maps, we were both comfortable with recommending that you schedule a public hearing. But I understand some of you didn't have the map, so it is up to you whether you're comfortable doing that. And also I believe it would have to go to, this one has to go to the county, correct?
Yes, it is a GML review and I I, in my memorandum, I recommended that when you set a public hearing, you send the plans out for GML review at the same time.
How far off do we think we are? Or going to find out when we go up there to dig with it?
Depends on how soon the visit takes place and how soon a written letter can be generated by the building, fire and highway.
So and the applicant could allow us to keep the public hearing open until we get that stuff? Is that possible too?
Yeah, and you could, you could, you can open the public hearing and leave it open for
Right.
I have communities that do it for years. I just got off a community that had a, that had a hearing open for three years, so.
And then if they don't allow that, then we have to vote on it within 62 days, correct?
Once you close the hearing, yeah.
It's not a matter of them allowing it, Paul. It's the board's decision whether you're gonna.
Yes, I under, right, yes, I understand that. So I'm gonna make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
And and Paul, I'm gonna second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Uh, Mr. Schmolsy opposed.
For the record.
Oh.
Yes, he opposed.
But now it would be appropriate to have a uh motion to send this to the Ulster County Planning Board for their review and recommendation.
I'll make that recommended. Recommendation by chairman. Seconded by who?
I'll second it.
By Dr. Longston. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, carried. Alright, Mr. Kentup, we will see you next month.
That's wonderful. Thank you all very much and I'll contact uh, I'll start with Robin in the morning and um uh, and make arrangements for the next site inspection. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You have a pleasant evening.
You too.
Hi.
Valley Agricultural LLC, Cresco Labs.
John? Mr. Schmols, I believe, has recused himself for this.
Right.
So I don't know if he won't, if he's gonna stick around and listen as a an interested member of the public, but if he wants to go home or go to the kitchen or whatever, um, you might want to do change the order a little bit to approve your minutes. And then Mr. Schmols, he can decide whether he's gonna hang out or not, rather than make him stay the whole day.
Anyway.
Okay, beautiful.
Alright. I will re, I, for the record, I am recusing myself.
Hey, who's here to represent uh?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. With me today, Sabrina Noah, the applicant, I have Justin Ryder, our counsel of record. And we have our engineering team, Skip Francis, and I believe he has also um brought uh another representative from his team, Ryan Farnum.
They may unmute themselves. A brief presentation of where we are presently and hope to get accomplished tonight.
Apologies, Mr. Chairman. Um, was that question to me? I'm, I am prepared to make a very brief uh presentation of the site and uh look, look forward to doing that at your direction, sir.
Okay, if you wish to.
Thank you. Mr. Lockman, town planner, may I have access to share my screen?
Yes. Hold on, please.
Well, Mr. Lockman is doing that. Good evening. My name is Sabrina Noah. On behalf of Cresco Labs, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Um, we have had a few conversations about this and are anxious to hear the feedback from the community. Um, we will do a brief presentation and then follow your lead, Mr. Chairman. Can everybody see my screen?
Not yet, but you should be able to share.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Wifi's going off at 9:30.
I will go quickly. Um, as I stated, my name is Sabrina Noah. I'm the senior vice president of public affairs. With me today, I also have Marcia Maxwell and Christian Picara, my VP of Government Affairs and the Eastern Regional Director. Um, on behalf of Cresco and our 2,900 employees, including 60 currently within the state of New York, we are very excited to present this um at today's meeting. Currently, Cresco is, is in 10 states. As we've discussed, we were founded in 2013 in Chicago, Illinois. And while we are an Illinois-based company, we are very proud of our four medical dispensaries and our Walkill interim production facility. We currently have 18 other cultivation and production facilities across the US and are very excited to potentially add Ellenville to that, to that family. A key focus of Cresco's mission is always to have a large and supportive community outreach strategy. We believe it is the difference between a success, it is the difference in a successful project. Those community focuses include partnerships with some of the groups we've been working with in town, like the Masonic Temple and the Moon Day Club, community reinvestment, environmental remediation and local hiring and ancillary business opportunities. I do like to show a few of our photos of our staff. We are so proud of their work. Each of our employees receives 36 hours of paid volunteer time off every year. Um, I always like to tell people we do a lot of trash cleanup. We, we focus on beautification and ensuring that our communities see the benefit of having a Cresco facility. In addition to our community outreach strategy, we have a robust commitment to social equity. The New York State Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Programs have some of the most, excuse me, I'm gonna let you handle that, Mr. Lockman, somebody's requested you join. Thank you, sir. New York, in addition to being a wonderful adult use market, has some of the most robust social equity provisions. And we look forward to collaborating with many of the folks in the community to ensure that we have education and workforce development in developing a pipeline for potential employees, focusing on restoring justice to ensure that those individuals disproportionately affected uh have the opportunity to participate in this industry. And then always one of the things I love talking about, our community business incubator, where we help individuals become licensed. As we're gonna discuss tonight on the, the economic invite, impact of this proposed facility, we believe we will be targeting 300 to 400 full-time employees from the initial build-out with an average salary of $40,000 and a full suite of benefits. This includes medical, retirement, a variety of, of different mental health services. Um, we're also very proud to ensure that a majority, as many of our employees become owners and shareholders. Um, we believe that that is the best way to make a difference. As we're going to discuss today, our Cresco Labs Worsing Facility, it's always important to reflect on where we've come as we discuss where we hope to go. Um, as many of us have talked about in the, in our previous board meetings, this prior site was manufacturing of trade knives and channel masters. And while the site currently has a legacy of the remaining slab and the need for some environmental remediation, we are excited about the opportunity to add a new manufacturing corridor to this community. I think it's always important to remember that while the product inside the facility has changed, its core values of manufacturing really remain the same. Our proposed facility is currently on 90 acres and will be 380,000 square feet. And I've added a few site plans. Um, I know we've seen a few versions of these before, just to help the board and members of the public orient the site to the parcel and where we intend to hopefully develop. And this is just a, a close-up of the proposed building. One of my favorite parts about doing entitlement in, in this space is to really help with beautification and taking the site, which um, as you enter down Main Street and you look on that left, all you kind of see is, is the, the remnants of that prior facility. And we look forward to with our landscaping plan proposing some significant beautification with natural vegetation and really just making that, that corridor into your beautiful community just a little bit more beautiful. Mr. Chairman, I, I know we've, we've, we've talked at length about our best viable control technology for odor, our intentional facility design and our commitment to the community and the environment, understanding the nature of today's hearing. That concludes our presentation and we look forward to um continuing to, for today's meeting.
Thank you. We did receive the letter from Ulster County. Planning Board and their review of the agricultural project. And they, they just, I'll paraphrase it, it'll be on our websites. It says, congratulations to the applicant as well as the time and diligence through this proposed development. Assorts advisory comments, any and all these, including but not limited to access parking, utility, stove water. Cresco will need to be identified on a final file. Odor management advisory, the community and the applicant should have an ongoing discussion regarding plant potential order complaints and defining actionable steps that the applicant will take if the truth occurs. Our particular concern is the board is president, uh, president of a nearby school. The building. Uh, the applicant is in need of coordinating local emergency responders and should develop emergency management plans with these entities. So they were very minimal. I, I think the big one Sabrina, you just mentioned the odor complaint. And they, that would, all of this would be addressed at the next meeting. But I did want to make sure that the board had it and was aware of the county's referral to GMA review. Mr. Ryder, do you have anything that you want to bring up?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, you just mentioned the, the positive GML response and we do think um this board has already alerted us to those issues and concerns and we have largely addressed them in our site plans and in our seeker documentation to date. Uh, we look forward to hearing from uh your public tonight. Uh, I guess I would just ask uh if you are in fact ready to act on seeker prior to uh the opening of the public hearing.
For Mary Lou.
Yep, because there is subdivision involved, we have to do seeker before the public hearing is opened. I know that we have, not, not me when I say we, I believe Jonathan prepared a part two. I think that would be the first thing to go through. Jonathan, do you want to lead that discussion?
Yeah, um, the, you, I generated a, a, a part two form that was uh actually accepted by the board. Uh, if you look at the uh uh, at my memorandum on page five, you'll see that I noted that the part two form was adopted by the planning board on December 21st. Uh, then the applicant prepared a part three submittal. And uh, in that part three submittal, they addressed each of the uh points that I had stated where I believed that the, that there would be moderate to large environmental impacts. And uh, I've reviewed their part three submittal and I believe it's complete and the board uh should take action whether to accept that part three. At the time, they also incorporated comments from the Environmental Conservation Commission uh of, of the town, um, who had submitted comments uh at that, prior to that time.
Looking for a motion to accept.
Do you want to read through those? That's a pretty big project.
Uh, the, if I can let me find the, if what you're asking for is
Yeah, I would.
The part three, the part three form uh came with a cover letter uh dated, the, 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 the latest revision was January the 14th. Uh, and uh that was a letter from Justin Ryder to John Constable dated January 14th enclosed, please find a draft EAF part three with supplemental narrative in response to planning board's checklist for items to address and so forth. Uh, the uh, the attachment is two, four, six, eight, there's, it's nine pages. Um, and uh, are you suggesting, Mary Lou, that I read the, the uh part three document?
I I am, just because this is a, a very big project. There's a lot of things that are addressed in that. Um, we have a, a full house tonight and I think that they uh should hear what we're passing, should the board decide to.
Okay, and this will be, and then you'll open the public hearing up for comments after?
After you've made the seeker determination, yes.
Okay. Um, alright, the document uh is an EAF part three supplemental narrative slash negative declaration uh by Valley Agricultural LLC. On the EAF part two identification of potential project impacts, twenty-one items in seven categories were identified as moderate to large impacts may occur. These items are described below in support of the determination that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. One, impact on land, subpart D. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than one thousand tons of natural material. As indicated in the EAF, less than thirty thousand cubic yards will be removed from the project site. It is normal and customary for constructing a facility of this size that excavation quantities of this magnitude are removed from the site. As the land areas of the site have been previously disturbed by development of industrial facilities, most material removal comes within the previously disturbed areas. Further mitigation measures implemented during construction would include best management practices designed to control sediment and reduce potential for soil erosion. E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. As indicated in the EAF, the project will be constructed in one phase with completed antici- completion anticipated between twelve and eighteen months. As presented by the applicant, the extended timeframe is due largely to the interior finishing and equipment requirements at the site, which must accommodate several different functionalities for proper use of the facility. Construction staging plans will be prepared at the appropriate time in close coordination with the owner and selected contractor. These plans will be submitted to the town building department as part of the building permit application. All work will be performed at the times permitted by the town code. F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. The land areas of the site have been previously disturbed by development of industrial facilities. In accordance with the New York State DEC, New York State Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit for stormwater discharges from construction activity, GP dash zero dash twenty dash oh oh one. A stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared along with an erosion and sediment control plan for the proposed action to ensure compliance with GP zero twenty oh oh one. Mitigation measures implemented during construction would include best management practices designed to control sediment and reduce the potential for soil erosion. Adherence to the New York State Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit for stormwater discharges from construction activity, combined with the required SW PPP and implementation of best management practices would further reduce potential soil erosion. Proposed erosion and sediment control measures consistent with the town code are proposed. Erosion and sediment control measures shall be installed before any land disturbance and would be monitored and maintained throughout construction. As indicated in the EAF, herbicides will not be used on the site. Part three impacts on surface water. Subpart D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the bed or banks of another water, of any other water body. The answer, although the project site contains wetlands and other water bodies, no construction will take place within or adjoining same. Furthermore, all buffers from water bodies will be maintained. Wetlands on the project site have been delineated by a certified wetland specialist and all improvements have been designed to be outside of any wetlands or wetlands buffer area. E, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments. Their answer, a site-specific stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared which complies with the requirements of the NYSDC State Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit for Stormwater Discharges, GP zero twenty oh oh one. The SW PPP will include specifications for operation, inspection, and maintenance of stormwater management practices as well as an erosion and sediment control plan. With the implementation of the SW PPP and compliance with GP zero twenty oh oh one, potential adverse impacts to onsite or downstream water resources will be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. A significant portion of the property is being left in its natural state with the exception of necessary access to utility improvements. Okay, that's two pages. I have six more to go. Um, H, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. Answer, a site-specific stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared which complies with the requirements of the New York State DEC State Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit for stormwater discharges, GP dash zero dash twenty dash oh oh one. The SW PPP will include specifications for operation, inspection, and maintenance of stormwater management practices as well as an erosion and sediment control plan. With the implementation of the SW PPP and compliance with GP dash zero dash twenty dash oh oh one, potential adverse impacts to onsite or downstream water resources will be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. A significant portion of the property is being left in its natural state with the exception of necessary access to utility improvements. I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. Answer, a site-specific stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared which complies with the requirements of the New York State DEC State Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit for stormwater discharges, GP dash zero dash twenty dash zero zero one. The SW PPP will include specifications for operation, inspection, and maintenance of stormwater management practices as well as an erosion and sediment control plan. With the implementation of the SW PPP and compliance with GP dash zero dash twenty dash zero zero one, potential adverse impacts to onsite or downstream water resources will be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. A significant portion of the property is being left in its natural state with the exception of necessary access to utility improvements. Five, impact on flooding. Subpart D, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. Answer, in New York State, construction activities involving soil disturbance of one or more acres of land which discharge to surface waters of the state require coverage under the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation State Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit for Stormwater Discharges from Construction Activity Permit Number GP dash zero dash twenty dash zero zero one. The proposed action will disturb more than one acre of land and requires coverage under the New York State DEC SBDES General Permit for Stormwater Discharges for Construction Activity. Permit coverage requires the preparation and implementation of a stormwater pollution prevention plan including, one, erosion and sediment control practices in conformance with New York State's technical standard, New York State standards and specifications for erosion and sediment control. And two, post-construction stormwater management practices meeting the sizing criteria of the general permit and the performance criteria of New York State's technical standard, New York State Stormwater Management Design Manual. All proposed stormwater management measures will be consistent with the New York State technical standards and will result in the proposed project not having a significant adverse impact. A preliminary stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared in conformance with the New York State technical standards. New York State DEC requires that the water quality volume be treated through the use of specific green infrastructure practices. Sustainable stormwater practices to be employed to control water quantity and quality impacts include the use of porous pavers, grass swales, bio-retention areas, and a landscaping plan has been proposed, including the planting of numerous trees. An erosion and sediment control plan has been prepared in conformance with the New York State technical standard. All erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be installed before any land disturbance and would be mon- monitored and maintained throughout construction. The SW PPP will also include an operations and maintenance plan that includes inspection and maintenance schedules and actions to ensure continuous and effective operation of each post-construction stormwater management practice. The project sponsor will be the entity responsible for the operation and maintenance of all stormwater management facilities, both during construction and on a permanent long-term basis. Item thirteen, impact on transportation. Subpart A, projected traffic may exceed capacity of existing road network. Answer, Creighton Manning Engineering LLP has completed a traffic assessment letter report for the proposed project. The subject site is located on the east side of, but setback from US Route two oh nine and is accessed via the US Route two oh nine aluminum drive intersection. The facility will not provide for the retail sale of marijuana projects. Only cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution of the same will be performed. Thus, all traffic is limited to employees and supply vendors. The New York State DOT recently replaced the US Route two oh nine bridge over the Fantine Kill, a water course situated immediately south of aluminum drive and replaced the traffic signal at this intersection with associated repaving and restriping along US Route two oh nine. The CM study considered a signal phasing and timing plan based on the record cycle length of the US Route two oh nine, New York State Route fifty-two intersection with data collection and comparison to prior year data. The study analyzed shift work and trip generation with future growth. The level of service analysis indicates that with the proposed employee staffing plan, the study intersections will operate at a, at an overall level of service C or better in the build condition and that the proposed development would not have a significant adverse impact on the roadway network. E, the proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods. Answer, Creighton Manning Engineering LLP has completed a traffic assessment letter report for the proposed project. The subject site is located on the east side of, but setback from US Route two oh nine is accessed via the US Route two oh nine aluminum drive intersection. The facility will not provide for the retail sale of marijuana projects. Only cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution of the same will be performed. Thus, all traffic is limited to employees and supply vendors. The New York State DOT recently replaced the US Route two oh nine bridge over the Fantine Kill, a water course immediately situated immediately south of aluminum drive and replaced the traffic signal at this intersection with associated repaving and restriping along US Route two oh nine. The CM study considered a signal phasing and timing plan based on the record cycle length of the US Route two oh nine, New York State Route fifty-two intersection with data collection and comparison to prior year data. The study analyzed shift work and trip generation with future growth. The level of service analysis indicates that with the proposed employee staffing plan, the study intersections will operate at an overall level of service C or better in the build condition and that the proposed development would not have a significant impact on the roadway network. Sub item fourteen, impact on energy. Subpart D, the proposed action may involve heating or cooling of more than one hundred thousand square feet of building area when completed. Answer, as indicated in the EAF, the project building will be three hundred and eighty thousand square feet. Central Hudson provides gas and electric service in the area of the project site. Central Hudson maintains electric utility poles in adequate infrastructure and capacity to service the electricity needs of the project so that there will be no significant adverse impacts relating to the provision of this utility service. The project sponsor proposes to employ several energy conservation measures intended to reduce electricity usage to, at this site. This includes the use of high-efficiency light emitting diode fixtures where practicable. Standby emergency generator power will be provided to support fire alarms, refrigeration and freezing units, and cultivation functions for the plants. Generators shall only be used in the event of an emergency and no adverse impacts are anticipated. Generators will principally be used only if there is an electric outage or interruption at the project site. Except that generators are anticipated to briefly run during weekly maintenance and operating testing. Item fifteen, impact on noise, odor, and light. Subpart E, the proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day. Answer, an odor management plan has been prepared to adequately minimize nuisance odors generated by indoor cultivation and processing of cannabis at the proposed site. The project design will utilize strategic placement of various facility elements to limit the probability of fugitive odors reaching adjacent developments. The primary means of active odor control will be achieved with carbon filtration. A facility-specific bulk carbon filtration canister system will be installed such that odorous air is either captured in recirculating scrubbers within individual rooms or captured in carbon media attached to the building's HVAC systems. Use of carbon filtration systems for odor control have a proven track history in many different types of commercial, industrial, and institutional facilities and regulatory agencies involved with the emerging cannabis industry have recognized carbon filtration as a best available control technology. Additionally, the facility proposes to install and operate air curtains at significant external doorways such as the loading unloading docks. These mechanical devices create a curtain of forced air which provides a barrier between the indoor odorous rooms and the external air, thus retaining the fugitive odors inside the facility for capture and treatment by the carbon system. As such, routine odors are not expected for more than one hour per day. Finally, as an additional precaution, the facility will have a local contact person which will be available to respond to calls regarding nuisance odor complaints. Subpart D, the proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties. Answer, project site lighting shall utilize dark sky friendly fixtures with shields to prevent light spillage into adjacent undisturbed areas to the greatest extent practical. A lighting plan has been provided that demonstrates less than one lumen at the property lines. Lighting levels after the operations of the facility closed will be reduced to minimum security levels. Subpart E, the proposed action may result in lighting creating sky globe brighter than existing area conditions. Project site lighting shall utilize dark sky friendly fixtures with shields to prevent light spillage into adjacent undisturbed areas to the greatest extent practical. A lighting plan has been provided that demonstrates less than one lumens at the property lines. Lighting levels after the operations of the facility close will be reduced to minimum security levels. It is not anticipated that lighting will be brighter than existing area conditions. Impact on human health. Uh, there are seven subparts. B, the site of the proposed action is currently undergoing remediation. C, there is a completed emergency spill remediation or a completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to the site of the proposed action. D, the site of the action is subject to an institutional control limiting the use of the property such as an easement or deed restriction. E, the proposed action may affect institutional control measures that were put in place to ensure that the site remains protective of the environment and human health. H, the proposed action may result in unearthing of solid or hazardous waste. I, the proposed action may result in an increase in the rate of disposal or processing of solid waste. And L, the proposed action may result in the release of contaminated leachate from the project site. The answer to those seven issues. The project site is on New York State DEC's environmental website database and is subject to a RICRA corrective action and post-closure consent order with associated envi- With associated environmental easements together with the environmental factors. The site plan was designed with the knowledge of and consideration for the environmental factors. This project recaptures and reuses an otherwise dormant site. All design elements consider the nature of the environmental factors and have no disturbance of same. Further, the project has subdivided environmental easement number two. To ensure that it remains undeveloped in perpetuity. At all times, all operations of the facility will ensure that the site remains protective of the environment and human health. The project sponsor shall lawfully dispose of all solid waste processed at the project site. In accordance with best management practices. The site has been remediated and is subject to monitoring. All uses of the project site are in compliance with consent order and environmental easements. Solid and hazardous waste. Will not be unearthed as a result of the project and the action will not result in the release of contaminated leachate. No adverse impacts related to environmental contamination are anticipated at the site. Then the following are responses to the Environmental Conservation Commission Town of Worthington comment letter dated January sixth, twenty twenty-two. Water. The Town of Worthington Napanok Water District WD one nine one and the Village of Ellenville. Will both have the available features to provide water service to the facility. The village has expressed their interest in being the primary water provider to the facility. The domestic water and irrigation demand is anticipated to be approximately ninety-eight thousand gallons per day. Secondary or alternate water supply is available from the town's Napanok Water District WD one nine one. Both districts have capacity based on the maximum recorded daily demands. A new underground vault will ensure integrity of the systems. The project will reduce water use by collecting condensate from its air conditioning and dehumidification units. As a multi-state operator in a burgeoning industry. The applicant consistently looks to new technologies and best management practices to preserve natural resources in its operations. Wastewater. The property is served by the Napanok Sewer District SD one nine one. The wastewater discharge is anticipated to be approximately twenty-six thousand gallons per day. And the district has provided a service letter and has capacity based on the maximum recorded daily demands. The wastewater system stream will consist of domestic wastewater, irrigation leachate and periodic floor wash operational practices. Irrigation occurs via drip line six to eight times a day. Grow room turnover occurs every nine to ten weeks, which involves floor wash down at that time. Except for a mild increase of domestic wastewater occurring at shift changes. There will be no appreciable wastewater peak discharge resulting from normal facility operations. The characteristics of the wastewater stream such as domestic leachate and floor wash down. Will not require industrial sampling or compliance protocols. Irrigation leachate has no harmful materials associated with it. Leachate water is water that has not been absorbed by the plants during the watering process. Only common fertilizer is added during the irrigation process. And further, the process of extracting the final product from the plant does not involve additional substances. Recycling slash reclamation. The project will reduce water use by collecting condensate from its air conditioning and dehumidification units. As a multi-state operator in a burgeoning industry, the applicant consistently looks to new technologies. And best management practices to preserve natural resources in its operations. Summary of findings. The Town of Worthington Planning Board has carefully considered the facts, analysis and conclusions. Set forth in the full environmental assessment form, site plans, subdivision plan, wetland delineation report. Archaeological phase one A report, water and sewer assessment, stormwater pollution prevention plan. Architectural renderings, odor management plan, DEC consent order and environmental easements, traffic assessment report. Geotechnical exploration report and other supplemental information. Based upon its review of the entire environmental record, the Town of Worthington Planning Board has determined. That the proposed action will not have any significant adverse impacts and a negative declaration can be issued under SECRA. The proposed action will allow for the productive reuse of this previously disturbed industrial site. And will enhance the town's downtown area. The project site includes a mix of second growth forest, wetlands and disturbed vegetative communities. Associated with the previous development and lies within the town's planned commercial, industrial and mixed-use district. The site was formerly an economic generator for the town and village. And the proposed project can once again be an economic generator and gateway to the community. The proposed action has been evaluated for compatibility with existing and future land uses within close proximity of the project site. In consistency with applicable zoning ordinances and other public policy documents. There are twenty-one moderate to large impacts associated with the proposed action noted in the EAF part two. Many of which are substantially similar in nature and effect. The foregoing details, these impacts and the mitigation measures that will be implemented. To minimize the environmental impacts. The Town of Worthington Planning Board has determined there will be no adverse environmental impact from the proposed action. And issues a negative declaration for the proposed action.
Well done.
Thank you.
So on the motion.
One second, John. Second, one second, um, on the last page, the second. One, two, three, four, five lines down, it said the site was formally, I think that should be formerly. So I'd make that, we make that correction.
Formerly, yes, I agree.
Formerly not.
Formerly.
It wasn't prom.
It was, there was, there was, no one was wearing a tuxedo, okay, formerly. Okay.
Yes, John. Now it would be appropriate to have a motion. Into part three, a negative declaration as read by Mr. Lockman.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Paul Dr. Longstein.
I'll say.
Subjected by.
Derek.
Alexandria. On the, on the vote.
See if there's any discussion first, that's. Make sure you ask for discussion first.
Any discussion on the proposed action?
I like the fact that they're going to use water condensate from the air conditioner and the dehumidifiers. Help reduce water usage.
Now, as I understand it too, that. The village will be the primary source of water and Napanok Water District will be the backup.
That's correct.
And. The effluent that, that leaves the building that's not used, that's going to go through the, the waste. For. Uh, facility that, that we have now, right?
Yes, and it's, and it's not considered to be. Industrial wastewater that needs to be monitored or tested. Uh, it really has ordinary wastewater properties.
Understood, thank you.
I have a, I have a question about that, Doug, since that was brought up. Um, the village is going to be supplying water. And I, I take it the Napanok Sewer Plant is going to be handling the septic?
Yeah.
Right? So, so how, how does, because I know I pay my village water bill and sewer bill. And like, how does the billing ask?
They'll have to work that.
That's something they'll work out?
Yeah, thank goodness, we don't have to worry about the intricacies of billing of water and sewer. It's not in our job description.
All right, fine. Just was thinking.
As, as long as we're sure we can handle the water requirements and still service. The people of the, the village and the town and, and, and handle the net, you know?
As far.
And, uh, that, that, that's my concern and also. Fire protection with the hydrants and things like that, that we can handle that, that volume of water.
All of the agencies have given positive reports.
Yeah, and, and we had our engineer look at, at the water and sewer and we got a. An email from him, I believe back in December saying that he was satisfied with the plan.
And, and I did read. Those Mary Lou, I, I just wanted to, to, I guess. I'm, I'm fine.
On the vote. Dr. Longstein.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Alexandria.
Yes.
Mr. Odom. Mr. Odom. Hey Dan. Uh, you're, you're muted.
Oh, uh, I'm sorry, my, um. System froze there for a moment.
On the vote?
No, Antimunian.
I vote aye.
Uh, I vote aye, so we have a unanimous vote. And now declared secret, before we open the public hearing. I just want to, uh, make a small statement. That this is a legal agricultural. Growing facility in the state of New York. And although we may have personal or religious or other feelings about the usage. The, the, what is before us right now is the ability. This agricultural facility to open. So with that, uh, I'm gonna take a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Jim.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Okay, is there anybody here that wishes to speak on behalf of this agricultural?
And if you could use the button at the bottom of your screen to raise hand, I will scan the participant list. And, uh, call on you and when you hear your name called, uh, you can respond to that. I have one hand raised by someone named Roger. Roger, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to keep this brief. It's very late, John. That was. I was gonna say, can you repeat something on page two, but never mind. Um, I'd just like to say I'm totally in favor of this project. This is a win-win for everyone concerned. It's a win for the town. It's a win for the company. It's a win for the landlord, the people that own the property now. Uh, for, for years and years and years, we've driven by this piece of land that's been really an eyesore. And now we've got a company that is coming in, that's gonna spend money, that's gonna give back to the community, that's gonna be jobs. Um, it seems like their promises are gonna be made good, not like past projects and present projects. That have made a lot of promises, but yet have fallen through the wayside. Um, I can't see why anybody would be against this project. And I would just ask that this board do its due diligence, make sure all the Ds, all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted. But when that is complete, I would ask that you. Move as quickly as possible so we can get this project going. It's a win-win. It's a good deal for us. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
I have a list of forty-three participants at this time, which has remained steady throughout the night. I do not see another hand raised.
I would like to make this other statement.
Jonathan, I'm sorry.
Anybody that wishes to write a letter to the town planning board and get it in. Within the next two weeks in favor or opposition. Will be read by each board member and they will take that in consideration at the next public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I saw that Wally Nichols was waving, yes. He's using his actual hand to raise.
Oh, Mr. Nichols, go ahead.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to say, um, I'm strongly in support of this and thank you guys for, uh, bringing this to our town. I've been a business owner for twenty years here. Could not be more happy that this is happening with what seems to be minimal resistance. So. That's all I have to say. The person who just spoke before me articulated many of the concerns I had and it's all great. So thank you very much and good night.
Uh, I see a hand for Rick Hewitt.
Hi, how you doing? Thanks for, thanks for having me. I just want to say I support the project as well. I'm a local business owner as well. I own Blue Eagle Security. And I just wanted to let everybody know I support the project strongly. Thank you.
It's on the back page, Bart.
Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak? I will entertain a motion to keep the public hearing open.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Doug.
On Odom, Doug Hart, on the motion, will in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Lockman, we have. Something on discussion with. Please.
John.
Yeah.
Um, just for the record, it should be noted that we did get a public, a comment today by email from Riverkeeper. It's sixteen pages long. Um, there's a couple of different letters in there, so I'd suggest that we provide that to the applicant. To our engineer and that we put that on the website tomorrow in case anybody wants to look at it. But that is also part of the record of the public hearing.
And.
Mary Lou, does that organization have, um, um, any, um. Uh, I guess for lack of a better word, teeth, um, in what they're saying or?
Uh, you know what? We got it at three thirty this afternoon and I had another meeting after that, so I have not even gotten through the whole letter. So, so I couldn't say, but there are some technical things in there and I'm certainly not the person. To, to look at that. That's why I recommend that we send it to Dennis Larios.
Oh, I agree. I, I just saw it briefly today as well.
Yeah, I think that, that those of us who did see it probably only took a very quick look because it came in pretty late.
Okay.
And I will, uh, tomorrow, uh, go through documents received and work with, uh, Mr. Tuzelino or. Our, uh, town board member and webmaster, so to speak, uh, to get these up on the site. Uh, we already have a tremendous collection of documents submitted on Cresco. If anyone wants to. Actually look at the plans, read the, uh, SW PPP report, uh, it's all there. Everything that's been submitted since November the thirtieth is available to the public on our website.
Um, also, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned something about two weeks to get letters in, but actually because the public hearing is still open. They should actually have the month, you know, they can get them in before the next meeting. Would you agree?
I agree.
Yeah, and, um. I, I know, uh, Mr. Ryder and Mr. Francis, the attorney and engineer. Have gotten a copy of my January eleventh memo. Uh, and there are some, uh, technical items to be addressed. Uh, in the plans, the plans are substantially complete. That's why we had this hearing. And obviously the plans are complete enough that they were sent to, uh, the county for GML review. But there are still some more, uh, uh, cleanups in the submissions. And we expect those to come in, uh, and we'll review those two weeks, uh, prior to the, uh, next hearing. Uh, next portion. hearing, next portion of the hearing.
Our next meeting is on February 15th, so they'll have to be by noon on February 1st.
Mary Lou, Barbara just said, um, escrow count needs to be.
Yeah, John was starting to, to mention that when I interrupted him to get in the Riverkeeper letter.
Yeah, Justin, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yes, we certainly are aware of the technical changes we need to make in the plans as per two in your comment letter and as Mary Lou was just pointing out, we intend to have a full submission for you February 1st, no later than noon, addressing those concerns. I did speak with Cresco representatives today and they are aware of the escrow issue and we will have funds by overnight delivery to Town Hall, but I will alert Barbara Paeus of the precise day it's leaving, so, so there's no confusion over which day she should be expecting the arrival of the escrow check.
Okay. John, one, one more piece of cleanup, I guess, and not just for this application. The legislature has allowed remote meetings to continue. Should you want to do that until April 1st? Would you, would the board like next month's meeting to be remote as well, given our numbers go up every day? And they have people from throughout the United States, you know, on this particular application, and I certainly don't know that the planning board would like to ask them to hop on a plane right now.
No. And also I don't know that our room is capable of handling it and I, I would suspect if we rented a room, we would also have to COVID clean it afterwards, chairs and so forth. So I think the best and logical is to continue with this Zoom meeting. I'm not in favor of it, but I think it is, is a good idea to continue with Zoom meetings until April at least.
And just, just so that the board knows, I've been monitoring the numbers out of the corner of my eye, we've, we've been having 41 to 43 participants for the entire night since 7:00 PM, which is really way more people than ordinarily come to Town Hall. So we're not suffering from lack of attention or participation by having it on Zoom. I think we actually have more people tuning in than who would have come to listen in person or to participate in person.
Seems to be working.
Okay, so it will be by Zoom and we will put a link up as it gets closer. The link for the Zoom meeting will be put on the webpage, the town webpage.
And Mr. Ryder is waving.
Hand up again.
Yes.
Well, with the chairman's permission and the consultants, we, we would also like to reach out directly to Dennis Larios. I don't believe he's on tonight's call. Maybe I missed his name and begin in addition to the escrow, but begin working on the bonding procedures with the town officials and with the town board as well. So if we have your permission, we'll make that reach out to Mr. Larios for an estimate.
Yes, please.
Yeah, and that is item 17 in my memo. We typically do not deal with projects of this size and there's a provision in, in the town code, in the zoning for inspection fees and bonding of site improvements that I, I dare say the planning board hasn't dealt with that in quite a while, but that will, that will be a, a important component of the next phase of your review.
Yeah, you, you have dealt with it, but probably not something this large in a very long time.
I think the last time we looked at something like that was for a subdivision road, not a particularly big one either.
Probably was Walmart.
Last time, yeah.
Walmart, Darmakaya.
Yeah, I've only, I've only been, I've only been with the, with you folks maybe three years.
You're a newbie still.
So is there any board member or anyone from Valley Agricultural that wishes to speak? Have any more further comments?
Thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman and the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this night and for the opportunity to participate by Zoom.
And you're getting out at 6:00.
Somebody on the chat has asked, would you please state the website address where the documents on Cresco can be found? Go to the Town of Worthing website, click on meetings, then after you click on meetings, you'll see planning board and then January 18th and all the, all the documents are on the January 18th meeting. And when we set up the February meeting, we'll move, we'll, 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 we'll adjust that, but right at the moment, they're all on the January 18th meeting and it's Town of Worthing, the main website.
Jonathan?
Yes.
It's Worthingny.gov.
Thank you, Robin.
You are welcome.
I don't see any other chat questions. I don't see any other hands raised.
I'll take a motion to keep, to keep the public hearing open.
Oh, we did originally.
We had that motion already.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the bits from the last meeting.
John Smallsley will make that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I was not here.
I abstain, no.
And Eric abstain.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. If there's nothing else.
Motion to adjourn, John Smallsley.
We second it?
I'll second it.
All right, all very, for Eric.
Bye.
All right.
Drive safe home, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.